Cover guard, attention. Cover guard, forward march.
I am the Legion's official flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will do my best to do my duty to guide my country, to help us in the past, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straightened. Trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
Forward march.
On behalf of the Sock Village, we would like to take trip 152 for the pledge of allegiance and the village's party to call roll.
Burgess?
Present.
Jones?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Here. Prior to before continuing to item number two, I wish to give a little of trustees a role that I did play sound and email that we received that Mr. Mayor received just before the meeting regarding the resolution that we discussed in the last meeting regarding the vote. And if you review it, you will see that the vote was passed. So we can remove the item off the agenda. We will not.
You said you provided us with kind of.
It's an email. I put it right in front of it.
I was told my mayor to continue with the resolution because it still has to go to the Senate. And we're going to invite this resolution. I'm trying to get the Senate to move that, so I'll let it move forward.
We'll move forward.
It did actually win by 115 days when they when present vote was taken before.
Okay.
Did you?
No, I had some other papers.
Okay. And then additionally, as we said in the last meeting, the mayor was in Springfield awaiting the decision of the vote and he left before they could make the vote so he could be here for the meeting. And I don't see him yet. So that being said, I need a motion to appoint Mayor Proton.
I must to appoint trustee Williams to be Mayor Proton for this meeting tonight.
Second?
Second.
Village party is called off.
Burgess?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Now, we continue on with the meeting. Item number two, public comment. All questions and comments, as we got corrected to the mayor pro temp. Each week will be given three minutes to comment on topics on the agenda only. Each speaker will be allowed an opportunity to speak. And before I really push the floor, I would just like to say that there was a question about there not being public comment on the last meeting agenda. But I did explain to the person who did ask that question that those two items are on this agenda so that you can ask those questions during this meeting. That's why we didn't have it unfold.
Okay, I want to, on behalf of Sock Village Citizens of Public Awareness, I want to talk about I, what I voted against today. I just want to make comment on behalf of the Sock Village Citizens of Public Awareness. We submitted a letter a couple of weeks ago regarding our subcommittee, senior relaxation organization.
Can you use the mic?
Yeah, the mic.
Okay.
Hello? I'm starting all over again today. My name is Burgess Burren. I'm in behalf of the Sock Village Citizens of Public Awareness. We submitted a letter to the board that we regarding one of our subcommittees, the senior relaxation organization. This letter was given to all to give requested assistance from the senior center chairperson. After numerous meetings with the mayor, nothing has been resumed. We got subjected to the racist rimples of the senior chairperson. We asked that the senior relaxation organization may be added to the calendar just like the other senior groups here in the village, allow to run their own program. Just like other groups, we asked that we get the key, I may be adding on to the calendar. And so we asked them, oh, I'll talk about I's name and it's rushing. I'll make it a comment.
This is item A. You're talking about by I.
By I.
At the senior committee, while the senior committee is on the agenda, these senior relaxation committee is not on the agenda.
But I'm about the senior committee.
And the item is for the report for the senior committee and the agenda does not discuss what happens with the senior committee. I know even made several requests to the board and to the mayor for something to be done. Definitely, that's definitely noted. However, the senior relaxation committee or any other subcommittee that would like to meet in the senior center and their policies is not on the agenda.
So I'm not talking about the senior committee. Oh, but okay, in other words, you not taking my comment because it's related to the senior committee. Is that what you told me?
I'm not taking your comment because you're talking about the subcommittee of the Sock Village, Polish, citizens for public awareness, their subcommittee being the senior relaxation committee. You would like them to be able to have the senior committee. You said you wanted them to be able to have keys and go in there without payment. That specific item is not on the agenda. The senior committee is on the agenda under reports, which means their report will be given, but the topic that you're referring to is not on the agenda. And so since this meeting is involving items that are on the agenda, I would ask that you please either ask them a question that is on the agenda and definitely, I know the entire board has mentioned multiple times that you, as well as other people in your committee, have talked about this as something that needs to be addressed. As far as I know, the mayor is working on it, but like I said, he's not here to address that.
Okay, well, since you want to go over to address the senior committee, which is my comment, I will run. Last, from the last meeting, you guys didn't have a public comment on for meetings. And as I understand, these are two different meetings, so why is everything being moved into one? These are two different meetings. Why is everything, I mean, the public comments grouped into one? These are two different meetings.
Is that your final comment?
Yeah, I'm asking your line behind that.
Okay.
The line is behind, I don't understand.
She said she was fine. As I explained to you at the end of the last meeting and I explained right before in the public comment section of this, the two items that we discussed at the last meeting are up for vote at this meeting. And since public comment is at the beginning of this agenda, it was reserved by the mayor who makes the agenda that public comment would not need to be on that committee or that meeting because we would have an opportunity to ask any questions about it at this meeting considering they were right after each other and both of those items are on the same agenda.
Two different meetings with one comment. Okay.
Anybody else?
Wait a minute. I don't know if this was on the agenda or not, but Veterans Day tomorrow, are we talking about Veterans Day?
The Veterans Day is not on the agenda, but I am sure that, but there's the proclamation. I don't know if what you're going to be discussing is going to be on there, but I know that I'm sure trustee Burgess is going to say something about it in this report because he wants to be had in the program.
Well, may I say something or not? And you can quietly, if it's not on the agenda, I want to find out tomorrow at Veterans Day.
Right.
And we're going to have speakers out here and it's going to be on the agenda. I was wondering why I'm trying to get a committee together with the veterans. Now, can I talk about it?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. The committee for the veterans is not on the agenda.
Now, I'm not talking about the committee. I'm talking about myself talking to the veterans tomorrow.
And then that would be something, the program for tomorrow is something that trustee Burgess and trustee Tate are working on. So I would ask you to talk to them after the meeting to see if you could be added to their lineup. I'm not sure what their lineup will be, but I don't know if they'll be able to fit you in, but that specific thing is not on the agenda tonight. So I'm sorry, sorry, you can't discuss.
That's why I'm asking if that was on the agenda. If it wasn't, then I wouldn't say it.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any mayor? Okay, seeing none. Item number three, mayor's report. And his address? He has four proclamations that he was planning on reading tonight. So let's see, let's see the order. Veterans Day. The first one, the proclamation for Veterans Day by the President of the United States of America. The United States military is the strongest, most capable fighting force the world has ever known. The brave men and women of our Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard demonstrate a resolute spirit and unmatched selfishness, selflessness, and their service reminds us there are few things more American than giving of ourselves to make a difference in the lives of others. On Veterans Day, we reflect on the immeasurable burdens borne by so few in the name of so many. We dedicate ourselves to supporting those who have worn America's uniforms and the families who stand alongside them. Our true strength as a nation is measured by how we take care of our veterans when they return home. And my administration is committed to ensuring that heroes and their loved ones have every chance to share the promise they risk their lives to defend. We have made it easier for veterans to convert their military skills to the civilian workforce, enable more veterans and their family members to attain federal education benefits, and expanded across to timely, quality healthcare for all veterans. Just as every veteran deserves the support and benefits they have earned, those who have been given everything to defend our homeland deserve a place of their own to call home. To uphold this ideal, the First Lady Michelle Obama and Dr. Jill Biden's Joining Forces Initiative has forged partnerships with local leaders across America to uphold the dignity of every veteran and to work and veterans homelessness. No one who fights in our country should have to fight for the care they deserve. Earlier this year, I was proud to sign the Clay Con suicide prevention for American veterans Act, which fills critical gaps in mental health care by raising awareness and taking steps to improve access to care for those suffering from the invisible wounds of war. Our veterans left everything they know and love and serve with exemplary dedication and courage so we can all know it's safe for America and more than just the world. They have been tested in ways that the rest of us may never fully understand, and it is our duty to fulfill our sacred obligation to our veterans and their families on Veterans Day and every day. Let us show them the extraordinary gratitude they so rightly deserve, and let us recommit to pledging our full support for them in all they do. With respect for and in recognition of the contributions of our service members, have made the cause of peace and freedom around the world, the Congress has held that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. Now, therefore, I Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2015 as Veterans Day. I encourage all Americans to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public ceremonies and private prayers. I call upon federal, state, and local officials to display the flag of the United States and to participate in patriotic activities in their communities. I call on all Americans, including civic and fraternal organizations, places of worship, schools, communities, and to support this day and commemorate expenses and programs. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand this fifth day of November in the year of the Lord of 2015 and of the Independence of the United States of America, 240th. Barack Obama. And if there are any veterans or current, anything with current serving, could you stand? On behalf of the Sock Village, we'd just like to say thank you very much.
Do we have any school board members in the audience tonight? School board members? Okay, we have another proclamation for school board members' day, November 15th, 2015. This proclamation will also be read at the school board meeting next Monday. Whereas, school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas, school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas, school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas, school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas, school board members selflessly donate countless hours to public service with no compensation. And whereas, employers are supportive of their employees who service give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and community citizens they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas, decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them at the front line of American democracy. Therefore, being resolved by the Sock Village that we proclaim November 15th, 2015, as school board members' day is a way to honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the education of our children. And I do believe we just had a school board member come in. Tammy Jones? Could you stand, please? Thank you very much for your time and your service.
Number three, presidential proclamation, national Alzheimer's disease, month 2015. By the President of the United States of America, each year, people with Alzheimer's disease experience devastating physical and emotional challenges as the ability to remember, learn, and think worse in overtime, and their loved ones face challenges right alongside them. Although Alzheimer is the most common form of dementia, it is often misunderstood and misperceptions about the disease can isolate and stigmatize people with dementia and their families. This month and every month, we stand with the more than 5 million people in the United States who live with Alzheimer's and with caregivers who help them age with dignity. The federal government is the leading funder of Alzheimer's research, and together with the scientific community, patient advocates, and advocacy groups, we are supporting a broad portfolio of research as it is a national plan to address Alzheimer's disease, which maps concrete goals towards the prevention and effective treatment of Alzheimer's by 2025. With the expansion and innovation of research initiatives, we are gaining new insight on how to delay, treat, and prevent this disease. We are also continuing to make investments in brain research through advancing initiative, neurotechnologies, brain, which will advance our understanding in the most intricate aspects of the human mind to address diseases that affect the brain. And earlier this year, I announced a new precision medicine initiative, and effort aimed at bringing us closer to a cure for diseases like Alzheimer's by accelerating biomedical discoveries and providing clinicians with new tools, knowledge, and therapies and select treatments that will work best for individual patients. As some of the brightest minds in our nation and across the world work toward finding a cure for Alzheimer's, we must also focus time and resources on finding better ways to support the families of caregivers who selflessly give of themselves each day. Caregivers around America show incredible devotion to those who look after and caring for a person with Alzheimer's, can have profound effects on one's emotional, financial, and physical well-being. As they work to promote the health of others, their dedication and compassion are marked as that we are all our brothers and sisters' keepers, and we must show the same level of support for caregivers as they show their loved ones with dementia. To learn more about the federal government, who is doing to support research and programs for families and caregivers, visit www.altimers.gov. This November, let us focus our nation's attention on the challenges posed by Alzheimer's disease, which families across America courageously face every day. As we continue to work to eliminate Alzheimer's disease and towards a new future free from it, let us lift up the lives of those living with it, and let us do all we can do to honor those that it's taken from us too soon. Now, therefore, I Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. I call upon the people of the United States to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and support the individuals living with this disease and their caregivers. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hands this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2015, and the Independence of the United States of America, the 240th. Barack Obama.
And last but not least, presidential proclamation for Military Family Month 2015 by President of the United States of America, proclamation. Since our country's founding, brave members of our military have stood strong as one American team, ready to defend our homeland and safeguard the values for which we stand. They represent the best our nation has to offer, and serving alongside them are proud and loving family members, heroes on the home front. Each day, they make sacrifices for their loved ones in their country. They have answered their call of duty, and as a nation, we must answer ours and serve them as well as they have served us. During Military Family Month, we pay tribute to and thank our military families for their service to our country, and we recognize the extraordinary ways in which they give of themselves for all of us. Our troops keep our nation safe from threats here at home and around the world, and our journey forward is not sustained by those in uniform alone. The United States is stronger and safer thanks to the millions of military family members who, in sacrificing cherished moments with their loved ones, selflessly afford as precious time with ours. Demonstrating the highest form of patriotism and preserving in the most demanding circumstances, some endure hard separations throughout multiple deployments. Spouses press pause on their careers or start to balance work and family while their loved ones are away. The 2 million children of service members work hard to keep up their studies and making friends despite transplant school systems on average of six to nine times. And following homecoming ceremonies and celebrations, family and friends stand on side of veterans, encouraging and helping them as they face the challenges of transitioning back into civilian life. My administration is committed to translating our nation's gratitude into sustainable, meaningful support. This year, we continue to work to provide our military families with tools and resources such as relocation assistance, childcare, and counseling services that help families while their loved ones are serving. Additionally, through the Joining Forces Initiative, First Lady Michelle Obama and Dr. Jill Biden have made tremendous strides in connecting military spouses with deployment opportunities. Since Joining Forces was launched in 2011, over 850,000 veterans and military spouses have secured gains thanks to the initiative. All 50 states have now responded to the First Lady and Dr. Biden's call to action to take steps to streamline ways for service members and veterans to obtain civilian credentials and licensure in these states. These collaborative efforts have dramatically lowered veteran unemployment and have helped inspire military families to continue pursuing their dreams and reaching for their highest aspirations. America endures because of the men, women, and families who serve and sacrifice to defend our nation and protect the ideals we hold dear. This month and in the months to come, let us show our enduring gratitude to military families and their loved ones in uniform for contributing to our nation's legacy and the beacon of hope and liberty. Their courage serves as a model of character and distinction, and their devotion to our country must be met with the recognition and service. Now, therefore, I Barack Obama, President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Military Family Month. I encourage all Americans to honor military families through private actions and public service for the tremendous contributions they make in support of our service members and our nation. In witness there aware of, I appear to set my hand this 29th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2015, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 240th.
Item number, or letter B, village part.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proton. First of all, I'd just like to say that this is the last meeting for the month of November. The next meeting will be a committee making home on December 1st, and then the next board meeting will be on December 8th. In December, those are the only two meetings we will be holding because the other two meetings for that month were not on the original 2015 schedule. So the board meetings for November, this is the last one, or this special meeting is called for some reason, and December, we have December 1st and December 8th, and this special meeting is called. Second of all, the rain barrel program was overruled this week. We passed out almost 1,000 rain barrels, and I really appreciate everybody who's a part of that program and who helped to work with that program and the volunteers who came in last week and called everybody to make sure and check that they had got their rain barrels or not. Some rain barrels are still being delivered. I still don't have mine yet, so please be patient. The rain barrel program is discontinued for this year because obviously we're getting into the winter season. The smoke alarm program is also on hold at this time, so if you have any questions about the smoke alarms, feel free to give me a call, but I was told that it was time to hold for a moment. Rachel? Okay. The other program that we had was the, anyway, we'll get to that. I'm going to address the elephant in the room tonight, and some people might not like this, okay? But as far as the senior center is concerned, I've been an active participant in the Friday afternoon Senior Relaxation Organization Friday afternoon groups. I've been an active participant in the last five out of six times that they have met. I think we just got through reading four proclamations that shows that we've had people fighting for our country for many, many, many years, many of which have given up their lives for our freedom and for the fact that we need to work together as a unit and that united we stand and fighting evolve. And I just want to say, out of the last five or six times that Friday afternoon Senior Relaxation Organization was there, the people that started that organization failed to show up, and I was told it's because we were there. So I think we have children in the room today, and I hope that we all are very careful with what we say tonight, but I think that before you call somebody a racist, you need to know your background of what's going on.
And it's not.
And as, excuse me, and as far as I know, I have asked the person who's in charge of that organization, why aren't the original members here? And I was told because you are. Okay? And I'm offended by that. Our group tried to work with that group. We wanted to, I heard that there was card games going on. I happen to play bidwist. I can play bidwist less than anybody else. I was looking forward to a card game. I haven't had a chance to have one yet. And I hope that we can all realize that we don't need to air our dirty laundry in public, and we just need to stop calling people names that are unnecessary because we have all fought too hard to be where we are today, whether you're in that audience or whether you're up here as a board member. We need to work together, and we need to stop bringing race into play for anything that we do. Because I, for one, am not a racist, and the people that are being called racist, I can speak for them too, and I can say they are not. We need to work together, and I challenge every senior to be in that room the next time these senior relaxation organization meets because we've got a roomy queue game going that is top notch. We've got people that are willing to play cards and do everything the original committee said to do. But the original committee told me that they want only the black people to be allowed in the room. And I'm offended by that. And I think we've come too far. We just read four proclamations about how we're supposed to be a diverse community and how we're supposed to work together, and I have been told that they want, they're the ones that want to stand alone for everybody else. I'm offended by that. I don't think we need that in Sock Village. I don't think we need that in senior center. I don't think we need that in our boardroom. I think we need to work and play together. So I'm sorry if I'm offending anybody in the audience today, but I think every Tuesday somebody comes to that mock podium and they make statements that are not true, and I've remained silent to the point where I think it's going to hurt our community if we keep saying and doing the things that we're doing. We are better than that Sock Village, and thank you very much that does have my just point.
The treasurer's on here, so village attorney. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. An update on the compliance with MWRD's new infiltration and inflow program. We have compiled most of the information needed for the first annual report, which is due in March of 2016. Kevin has been tremendously helpful tracking down the information for me. I have a report form work about 90% complete now. We just have some exhibits to finish and some overflow data to compile before we're ready to submit the annual report to the MWRD. before we're ready to submit the annual report to the MWRD. And conclude my report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Village Administrator, Director Public Safety, Mayor?
Mayor Protem and Board of Commissioners, our trustees. My report starts with a blueprint partners group. What the blueprint partners group covers is we're working toward diminishing the black and Salt Village. Before I go any further, I must say that in the six months I've been here, Gary Volcom has constantly talked about the effort needed to get things done, like from, if you wanna say, crime-free housing, demolition of, demolition of property that needs to be demolished. And we did do some research with staff in this, in this building, found out, including Chief Kowalski, found out that there are direct correlations, and this is a little repeat of what he said before between crime, vacant houses, water accounts, no water accounts. What I mean about no water accounts, there are accounts that our, our public works goes out and, you know, cut off water, and then they come back and people pour down concrete in there and rocks into it, so sometimes we cannot stop water. So we're gonna work together to resolve this problem. I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder because both of these partners will, will report their specific areas and also talk about their participation. Now, our membership in this committee continues to grow. We're gonna add new departments, and not that we shouldn't have added them before, but we have to find out how their responsibility tied into this effort, which Gary has constantly counted up being constantly since he's been talking about this, this whole problem. And actually, they're going, and I'll talk about this a little later, but they're, we're gonna submit for a University of Illinois and Chicago grant for their, their school of public administration, the people that work before master's degrees to come out here and do, assist us with evaluating what's going on with this whole white program we have here and is going on in other cities in this country, but it's gonna be free of charge. They have experience in various different, I wanna say, public and private agencies, from the Illinois agencies to Illinois governmental agencies to cities around here, and we're gonna get that, hopefully get this, and then come out these groups of threes or fours and do an evaluation and make some serious recommendations. Um, we're adding partners like the fire department is sponsored various, uh, fires, everybody know. We're adding them to determine so that they, now they know the fire, they know what the, the specific structures that have to fall, so their responsibility at least one begin until we talk a little further will be to tell us whether or not these utility structures or utilities of the structure should be turned off so we can get at removing those kind of lights. And in addition to other recommendations that they think are croaking or they think are... The public works are being added because they have responsibility to center out all aspects of the buildings, of the facilities, dwellings, and their surroundings, examples, streets, waters, lights. I could go on and on about that, but, you know, we need to help them, and I will come back with a recommendation about public works at the end of my report. But because they could go around and tell us a lot of things about what needs to be done so we can coordinate our efforts better to try to, uh... If we, if we reduce the crime, crime gonna go off because the chief is out there really going after people, we're pushing him hard, he's pushing himself hard, he's pushing us hard, all kind of new efforts it needs to be. He's giving a free hand, go ahead, those efforts, and he's doing a great job. But it's gonna go up, and then it's gonna go down. The property values, it's just like the United States, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, all the property values went down, and we can get the crime down, reduce the white, light, the number of vacant houses in this community. The value of the property will go up. There's no doubt about it, that's proven everywhere you wanna go, and you can talk, any kind of person that wanna do numbers can talk about that later. Everyone knows, the police department does, at least most of what they do, and at any rate, the chief will provide updates on his participation. I won't steal his thunder, you know, so, anyway, all that. Each one of the departments will talk about this to some extent. And this, however, we continue to be, I continue to be amazed at the number of, uh... Issues found relative to the correlation between crime, vacant properties, and water. Examples would be provided, for example, I gave you a few late earlier. I mean, I, I, I talked about what they, how they inhibit the water department from turning off water, and we found out other things that the chief recently about some places, some businesses that don't, we don't have meetings on certain things, certain waters that we don't know if they're using. But water is, you know, water is one of the life sources in terms of this village's government, you know, as I would see it. But more importantly, we can respond to all of the type of requests they have from public works and fire and police department. For example, in this last week, we've, we've, we've pulled in on one, one guy, I won't say, this is just one example of what happened this last week, six thousand dollars out that day in water. You know, Kevin didn't go out and turn it off, people turned, turned it back off. They put stuff down in there, so we said, okay, we're not, we're gonna start cutting the salt because it's not fair to the rest of the village residents. I mean, there, there are, are people renting property to various different village residents, getting it out for bits to occupy the place. Haven't, we don't know, we're gonna have to correlate this better. Get a person in there with two little child, children, and we had been the chief go out there and try to find out this person doesn't have a water, they've been there for two or three days. I mean, so what we're gonna do is, you know, that's not fair. So we have to do something like, for example, shut this person's water account. One of these landlords, I won't, I, I won't characterize what my opinion about that is, but, you know, some landlord puts somebody in there, like, there's a lot that's going on around here. And some of the people are talking about those people and being, it kinda makes me a little angry about it, but I won't go into that. The issue is that, you know, this young man came in and put a couple of, uh... We've done this more than once, put a couple of, uh, you know, deposit down and put it on account. Now, we're gonna go after these landlords, but we're gonna change this stuff around Salt Village in terms of the people doing this, the people that's out renting, or the people in Salt Village, and then turn around and not pay the water accounts, and we cannot hire people in public safety. It's the fact that every person in this room that's a village resident is, is ridiculous. Every day, in the last three weeks, I've gotten called. The good thing about these meetings are this, and I won't proselytize or prestate, I'm a business kid, but I'll shut up, is that, you know, just talking about it, people have called up, can I do this? Can I pay this? Wait a minute, you don't pay the bill in eighteen months, you wanna give us three hundred dollars, you owe twenty-five hundred dollars, and then take the money? Doesn't make sense. Well, they called me back two days later, oh, I got eleven hundred dollars. Really? I mean, at some point, it's not just that against that person. If you found eleven hundred dollars, give me eighteen hundred, you pay up, pay up bill, you know, you pay up portion of your regular bill, and you pay a portion of it down because we're not playing this game with, it's not me, it's you. It's the services being provided, I could go on and on about that. Kevin did not bid certain, certain places. So I'm gonna make a, a recommendation, you know, to, and I'm gonna ask this board for support, for this. That we be allowed to go out and, you know, make some, uh, get some bids for, and I noticed that I go through the committee, uh, I don't care personally, that we make, you know, to have some contractor come in here and be, make us bid on all of these fire hydrants and all of these water issues that we have, and in addition to that, at some point, we add some more workers toward public works. We, we, we have to have it. And if we do that, we need that support so that we can stop, you know, all this, the complaints, rightly so, wrongly so, but all of this stuff we're, we're papering over, FOIA's, we need to just get this resolved one time, and then they can keep up with it to the larger extent. Now, that, that is, uh, and other than this, I, I've already said that that is a big issue with Salt Village, and that will bring this, this facility, I mean, this facility, certainly this facility, but also this community up as far as up in all those three areas we're talking about. The other thing I have to say is, you know, CNN and Jim Brit, Jim Zarnik can talk about this if he wants to, but, and, and Trustee Burgess has talked about this. We have north of Baklir program as far as, I guess the application is gonna end in November third, yeah? And we only had one person apply for this, and I know there have been various, various, uh... Different meetings to, uh, to actually get people that live in those areas to try, try to come in and get their, uh, the three thousand plus dollars that we can have to, of being the north that have for the railroad. And Mayor Protem and Trustee have completed my report.
Thanks, Ms. France. Um, item four, reports of trustees and board committees, um, three vacation committee. Is there a report? Okay, thank you. Um, B, Parks and Parks Committee, Trustee Jones?
Okay, mark your calendars. Uh, November twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, in the community center, there will be the second open gym. This open gym will be open to all ages. Um, added to this open gym, there will be a cooking class provided by Chef Washington. There will be flyers passed out, um, given specifics, hunted times, and, and everything. Um, also, on December fifth, that will be the Christmas parade. Uh, letters will be going out to the fire department, uh, police department, as does public works. Uh, flyers will be going out for that too. Um, toy giveaway, December nineteenth, and there will be flyers out for that also. And you can also check the Salt Village Parks and Recreation Facebook, and there will be a lot of information on there too. And that concludes my report.
Uh, Public Works, Trustee Burgess?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, I'd like to, um, address Mr. Ferment, there is a public works committee. Um, I have, you know, need, I have sent what you're talking about to our public works chairman, and I understand some of those things he was told not to correspond with me, but I'm saying it's now in public. Uh, we do have a committee, I would like to be involved. I've also asked about employment, I've asked about a lot of other things. And recently, I just asked about an amendment to resolution to go to the ordinance committee, I'm sorry, the ordinance review committee, and I'm still waiting so we can bring it before the board and, um, let everybody know what we're trying to change, and some of those things that you said, um, we're on that. Also, our meeting will be this coming Wednesday, tomorrow at seven P.M. here at Village Hall. Uh, we will be discussing further some things that we would like to see, um, some of those things that you talked about. I have talked to you about it as far as bringing on more people and how we can do that. I didn't, um, expose how we would be able to do that, but I will expose it at the meeting tomorrow, so if you'd like to be there, we can discuss that because we do need more people, and I have already discussed that with the, the chairman, I'm sorry, with the administrator about bringing in more people here in the village seasonal work. So I asked, I asked to have that, um, already talked about, and again, that must have been tabled. I'm not understanding why, but, uh, it was, it was not brought up, so I'm hoping that when our meeting, and as all meetings, our meeting is open to the public, and, um, yourselves, the mayor, the, um, administrator for the public works are all invited. Uh, the meeting starts at seven, six-thirty, where we have a subcommittee meeting with just the trustees and, um, um, Mr. Well, if you'd like to attend. So those are some of the things that we've talked about. We've submitted questions, and those questions, I don't know what happened to them, but I'm just saying that we need to bring this up, and if you, if you're gonna discuss anything further with public works, I appreciate it if you let us know about it. And, um, that's all I have for public works. I also have a comment that was brought up a few minutes ago, and I'm sorry, I, you talking about the elephant in the room. This is not an elephant, this is, this doesn't, I, I... I don't like to hear, when I hear people make a statement that, I've been at meetings, I have been at the leisure, I'm sorry, at the relaxation meetings. I started going to those at first, and then I stopped going because it was too much, it was going back and forth, too many things, and I asked the mayor several times to reconvene with this, to talk, to get involved. Uh, the last time, something close to this happened, but it wasn't this. The mayor at the time was a trustee, and him and me went over, and we tried to talk to the parties involved, and we tried to straighten things out. But I hate to hear someone say that another person says that they don't want anyone other than black people to be in a meeting. I, that's, that's, that's a heck of a statement. I've never heard that, I've heard back and forth argument. But to put that out there, the time that I was there, yes, there was rift going back and forth, there was, you know, people angrily talking. But to say that we don't want anyone but blacks there, I don't know. I think somebody somewhere needs to get on top of that and find out because that's not what we're about, that's not what this village is about, and I know some of those people that were there, they're older than I am, and that's not what they're about. So I just wanted to bring that up, that's, that's something that I'm hoping that doesn't get out there, doesn't go viral or whatever, because I never heard it. And I'm not saying it never happened, but I know the character of some of these people that are seniors that were involved in that, they wanted their own day, they wanted to have not just their day where it's just all black, they wanted the day that their, that their committee could have like the other committees that are there in that senior citizens center, and they just wanted to have, to find out what they had to do to make that happen. That's all they wanted. I never heard, we're not gonna, it's not questionable, this is just, this is just a, um... This is just a comment for myself, this is not a question and answer. But I just don't want something like this starting in this village. We got too much other things to worry about. We got too many other things to worry about in this world than to keep going back and forth and rely on that and to say something like that. That's something that I'm hoping, that we stop here. I'm hoping that we don't do this anymore. I'm hoping that we can defuse this because it is a touchy subject. People are, and this is getting around the community, but we need, that's why I asked the mayor last time to get involved, because people are tired, they ask a lot of questions. I can't answer, but they need to be answered. And I'm just hoping that we do not walk away from here tonight stating or even thinking about that we have this segregation here in this village. You see the people here tonight. You see everyone that's here tonight. We don't need to start this, we don't need to even have that said that a group of people said something like that. And that's all I have to say. The, the housing committee at Intergovernmental, we meet on the same night. We're just divided an hour at a time. The housing committee always meets at six-thirty, and we try to be, the government committee going by seven-thirty. Uh, let's talk about housing first. Uh, as you know, we had a workshop on housing, and it concerned, uh, getting monies for down payment for those individuals who want to purchase homes. Uh, we had presenters here who walked the audience... Who walked the audience, uh, through the process of what they need to do. I have, as of right now, as of today's date, I have fifty-two inquiries about the next workshop we're gonna convene. So that's something that Trustee Burgess and I need to sit down and discuss of when the next workshop is, to get our presenters back online, and we're gonna have a second go around. Uh, we did have, I did receive some inquiries from some of our, some of our surrounding neighbors, communities, uh, who would like to be included in, in that. So we're going to do it again, and, and we're going to extend an invitation to get them involved because we all share the same problems. Uh, there are housing vacancies in every single community, some worse than others. Uh, so we need to find a way to address it, I think collectively, we can do that. So for the housing commission, committee, I'm sorry, Mr. Volcom, I hope he left, uh, for the housing committee, uh, we're, we're working on that, and we have somebody in the process of drafting admission statement. We want to get admission statement drafted so that we're gonna start soliciting residents who wanna participate. We want something in print that they can read and say, okay, this is what the housing committee will do, and then they can feel whether or not they wanna participate. So we want to get that, uh, admission statement drafted and, and approved before we go any further. Intergovernmental, we did a couple of things, uh, we had some meetings, uh, about three weeks ago, and I handed out, at the housing committee, commission, committee, I can't get this to you. At the housing committee, meeting, I handed out flyers where there was a job fair that was sponsored by the Cook County Sheriff. that was sponsored by the Cook County Sheriff, Ford Heights, and I forget the third one, Trustee Burgess. But there were three entities that were, that were involved, uh, in, in this job fair. I understand that it was overflowing, I did not get a chance to attend. But that's a good sign, that we're partnering, partnering with not only Cook County, but then Ford Heights, who has space to put on the, uh, the workshop. So we're gonna delve into that a little bit more and see if we can find information to make available to Saw Village residents, but it's gonna be available to everyone. But that our residents are made aware of where vacancies exist and how to apply for jobs. And I think we need to get Saw Village involved in the process to get an admission statement. The Intergovernmental Committee, uh, is also in the process of adopting the previous mission statement that, uh, when Trustee Burgess was over the committee. Uh, now that I have the committee, I'm simply going to propose, uh, adopting the, the mission statement that he already had, because it was working for him and his committees, and there's no reason for me to change that. So that's the update on, on housing at Intergovernmental, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee. The Public Safety Ordinance Review Committee, Trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple items. Last Thursday, I had to cancel the, uh, ordinance review committee, my ordinance, uh, hadn't, all of them hadn't, uh, came in yet. However, this Thursday, it will be immediate, 7:00 PM here at the Village Hall, will be, uh, be reviewing, once again, uh, the Public Comment Ordinance, amendment to the, uh, water payment, and, uh, the, uh, uh, requirements for the general requirements for the apartment heads. Now, on another note, I'd like to bring the attention, uh, first of all, I wanna, uh, want to thank Ann Martin's daughter for doing an awful lot of research, uh, a while back, and she found out that, uh, Village of Saw Village has, uh, history goes way back, and it involves our vets. Uh, during the career conflict, a lot of the vets came home, and a lot, a lot of the vets had a hard time, the people had a hard time accepting them back in, uh, in their cities and towns and stuff. The 394, uh, came far south of Saw Trail and three months old stopped, and, uh, there, that, and then there's a few people set up a homestead here. But then, uh, there's a, uh, a few people came together and started building housing for the vets. And by 1960 and mid seventies, uh, between 75 and 80% of our residents in this town were veterans. And that continued during, throughout the, uh, uh, the Vietnam conflict and so forth. These soldiers, when they come home, people sometimes disrespect them, uh, and, uh, that, that's a shame. These guys, the men and women, they go out, they give their life for your country, and for you and I, consider it, and we have peace. So I asked each and every one of you, I don't think there's a person here that would go against it. You do, you see a soldier, you see a veteran, go up and shake his hand and just say thank you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee. The Neighborhood Watch Committee, Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say, first of all, uh, Trustee Jones, I'm looking forward to Open Gym, it was a great time last time when we had it. All of the young people that came and the volunteers that were there really enjoyed the Open Gym. Uh, what was it, two hours? They didn't want to go when it was time to leave. And what we're gonna attempt to do, what we're going to do, while they have an Open Gym on the gym side, on the other side, we're gonna go and investigate, do have a oven that works. I think, uh, former trustee Poses is in the au- audience, they brought that stove. So we're gonna be teaching young ladies how to make a side dish for Thanksgiving table. So if you all want to come and learn how to cook, because I don't believe that there is anyone that could cook better than me in the entire world. I think I'm the best cook around, so we're gonna teach these young ladies how to cook a side dish for their Thanksgiving day table, that is gonna be fun. So if you want to bring some food, or you want to just come and test it, we'll be there at Open Gym. We probably won't have rooms standing around the walls, Trustee Jones. I also want to say, we want to end the year strong, Neighborhood Watch, we doing some exciting things. We had a, a great meeting on, uh, yesterday, and we wanted to end the year strong, so we talked about it and what we're gonna do moving forward for next year. Looking forward to, uh, meeting and beating what we did. It was a great opportunity to work with our back-to-school bookbag giveaway in an attempt to do two things, to provoke community involvement as well as awareness for public safety, reminding residents how to keep their home safe. For the first time ever, the Neighborhood Watch Committee will be presenting a live play in April. And the play is gonna be entitled, "Hey, Are You My Neighbor?" And it's gonna be a great and awesome play with all the block club members, and it's gonna bring out the blocks, and it's gonna bring out the residents on the blocks. And we're gonna have auditions, and we're gonna have a choir, and we're gonna have four scenes, and we're gonna raise money hopefully to pay for our bookbags, because our committee has made a decision not to only provide 250 bookbags next year with school supplies, but we're gonna raise another money to supply 500 bookbags next year with school supplies. And I want to live my community and work this thing out. That is our goal, and that is our focus. So we're gonna be pushing and working hard, having tag days, doing plays, telling you races, all kind of stuff to get those 500 bookbags. I know our committee can do it, and we're looking forward to it. And in conclusion, I want to say that, um, for Veterans Day, I don't know if he was a veteran or not, but I do want to recognize Mr. Griffin. He had a birthday on yesterday. Can I say how young? Mr. Griffin?
Yes, you can.
Yesterday, he turned 11. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Griffin. That concludes my report.
A thank to all these sort of, thank you.
Look, look to the budget finance committee, um, sorry, committee relationships committee, Trustee Washington.
Williams.
Williams, I'm sorry. Trustee Washington just got to talk to everybody.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, most normally, I'd just like to, um, report that the casino trip for the Shop With a Cop, which would be held on tomorrow, was canceled due to lack of participation. Um, so we are sad about that, because that was gonna be a pretty big fundraiser for Shop With a Cop. Um, I do encourage anybody who received their refund, if they would like to donate that right back to the cause, we will gladly accept it. Um, that being said, um, if not, if you would like to give a portion or whatever you can, um, we are still looking for donations for Shop With a Cop. Um, as I've stated before, that this was something, this was gonna be a, a pretty big fundraiser for us, as it usually is for Student Government Day. But we understand it's in the middle of the week, and I know that there's another casino trip, um, similar around the same time. So, um, unfortunately, I think we kind of got it at the end of the game. But again, we are looking for donations, so if anybody would be so kind as to donate to with the Shop With a Cop, we would greatly appreciate it. And I know I said it a couple of weeks ago, um, for the board, but, uh, the board usually donates $25 to Student Government Day. And as I've said before, um, we're pretty good for Student Government Day. So instead of doing it at Student Government Day, if you would like to open up your generous heart this time of year for Shop With a Cop, we would gladly accept it. And, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee. Before we go down, number five, I'd like to recognize Shanae Gar, um, here, I'm sorry. Uh, School Board of the Brigade, she wasn't here earlier, so. Can, can you stand up?
Today.
She doesn't want to come home. Former, former. All right, and then the fire, of course, Department of Community Missions, Fire Department, what commission chief operated forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Over the past two weeks, Fire Department responded to 16 calls. Five firearms, one structure fire, three gas leaks, four vehicle accidents, one medical assist, and one assist to another agency, including seal investigations. And to keep, uh, the Mayor and Board and the community up to date, we are still looking at specs for our new fire truck, and we've been working on it for a month. And we're still waiting on two more vendors to send us their books. So we're doing something, and also to receive the jack in the sack, we can start getting the books.
All right, thank you very much. Police Department Chief Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Uh, for a period between 10:27, 11:10, uh, the Police Department made seven arrests, five were felonies, two were misdemeanor arrests. Uh, several cases that I would note, uh, were complex cases. One being a, uh, long-term investigation of, uh, residents that, uh, they executed a search warrant with the South Suburban Emergency Response Team, uh, and recovered illegal drugs or weapons. Uh, speaking earlier of the, uh, blueprint for, uh, Light and Saw Village, we are now working with the Housing Commission in accordance with Crime Free Housing Ordinance, and working with the property owners, uh, on that ordinance, and, uh, making sure that, uh, the matter is moved, uh, promptly. Uh, we also had an investigation, unfortunately, a, uh, a long-term investigation where a, uh, a juvenile, uh, made an outcry, and, uh, we were able to secure class X felony predatory criminal sexual assault charges on an individual. Uh, it is pretty sad when, when adults have to prey on, on young children. Uh, that, that was a very heart-wrenching, uh, investigation, and I have to give kudos to Investigator Lawson, that, uh, he did a lot of, of good work on that. Uh, also, we reported, uh, we had a shots fired report. Uh, officers arrived, and unfortunately, no one was, uh, around the area. We later got a, a phone call of a, a victim at, uh, local emergency room. We weren't able to, uh, ascertain the individual that did the shooting was 14 years old. And, uh, it was ironic, because the very next day in Chicago, I'm sure everybody heard, of a 14-year-old who was shot and killed, uh, by gang members. So, um, we were lucky enough to, uh, identify an individual, and, uh, charges are pending, that individual is taken to the Juvenile Detention Center. So for some, uh, some better news, for a period between 10:26 and 11:08, the Police Department received 477 calls from Cal County. That's quite a few, uh, of calls that we received in a two-week period. Uh, Capers is up and running, uh, we're looking at getting Capers into vehicles now, but, uh, reporting system is now functional. Also, we participated with the schools, uh, in the, uh, Saw Village Consolidated School District, 168, 200, uh, 2015 community fund. We found that, uh, it was very successful. The board members were happy to have us there. Uh, we continue to work with the Loop Trail, uh, High School and Saw, uh, with State or Police Department in preparing for an active shooter drill and scenario. Uh, with that, uh, we, uh, were able to implement a rapid response active shooter, uh, general order and policy for the Police Department, which we didn't have in the past. Uh, I attended a training class, uh, through the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police on a new, uh, police and community reform act, which was signed by Governor in August 2015, uh, making, uh, all police departments in the Illinois area more transparent. Uh, so we'll be working on that and reporting more on that in the future, in the very near future. Uh, as mentioned, we continue to work with, uh, Gary and his group on the Housing Commission. We've identified three homes that fall under the Crime Free Housing Act, and working with those property owners, uh, on those matters. We're also, uh, in contact with ComEd and NICOR, the next group of homes that are slated for, uh, demolition by Cook County Sheriff's Department. And last but not least, I'd like to, to clarify some misinformation that was reported on social media. I guess I'm the bad guy, uh, who took the 50-year, uh, trick-or-treats, uh, 3:00 PM, the 6th or 7:00 PM. And, uh, I was the one that set those hours from 4:00 to 6:00, knowing that, working with Trustee, uh, Jones and, uh, and, uh, Village Clerk, on their trunk and treat, I figured two hours would be plenty for the children, especially since 6 o'clock was, uh, pretty dark at that time. So I'm the bad guy, not the mayor. Thank you, that's the end of the report.
Move to Public Works Department, Director Well, Well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items here, Public Works has been pretty busy. Um, streetlights, uh, in Saw Village, we are still working on a streetlight upgrade. Uh, currently, we have 235 heads replaced. Um, all of Saw Trail, all of Torrance Avenue, all of the east side of town, um, all of the north side of town, we're currently working in the south side. And then we'll follow up on the, um, Elskers, uh, Deer Creek, Carlisle, et cetera. Um, I've opened a plane in Saw Village, last reported that we would be out. Uh, we took some residential complaints, we addressed those. We started working in the, um, south side of town, and we worked on multiple streets over there. East side of town, uh, we had some calls in Carlisle Estates, Rank Wagon, over taking care of, um, some very migrant ones in Deer Creek, um, Saw Point Drive and Industrial Park. We had a few over there by a couple of the trucking terminals. And, uh, we will be continuing after the LEAP program is over. Uh, our Water Department, uh, still does its day-to-day operations, scheduled emergencies. Uh, we also took a couple extra personnel to, uh, assist on the north side shut-off list. We also had, uh, and with assistance with the, uh, Light Program. Uh, we're working on the enforcement with, uh, the housing authorities and administration, working on, um, callback to this, which are lists of, uh, complaint areas with, with meters in the houses, or vacant houses, or squatters, or no occupancies, uh, where residents are living in that vacant water bill. Um, personnel, we're out. Uh, we also set up a list for the Dixon Jets, which is our high bill ones, that we're gonna be working on first. Uh, but day-to-day, we will continue to do that work and continue, hopefully, to make Saw Village a better place. Garbage, this is another issue in Saw Village. Uh, all summer long, we've been having a little issue with, uh, residents throwing garbage in the street, thinking the sweeper will be to pick it up. We only sweep once a month. And coming into the winter time, we don't sweep in the winter time. Residents don't cut their grass in the winter time, so they don't pick up the debris in their yards, it's awful. So we're asking the residents to, please, every day, just like it was summer, go out, if you see peepers in your front yard, pick them up. See somebody driving down the road, throw a bag out, get a license plate number, call the Police Department. Uh, call Community Development, if you see somebody dumping somewhere. Public Works will come out, they will come out, gather the information, and hopefully, we can give them an understanding of what we're trying to do in Saw Village. We're trying to make this a better place to live for all of us. So keep your eyes out, keep Saw Village clean. Uh, grass cutting, uh, we definitely were behind this year. Uh, the summer was kind of a strange summer in the beginning. Uh, we are caught up with all of our grass cutting this year. All of our village locations are cut. All of our retention, detention ponds are just about finalized. Uh, Lincoln lines and drainage ditch throughout the center of town. We are getting assistance right now, doing the cleanup of the branches that were dumped over fences, debris. Um, just a collection of materials from the SWAT group, the sheriff group, which is also part of the U-Rew News Group, the Sheriff's Department. Uh, they will also be out, uh, cutting some locations in another month, which is their, their quiet time of the year, so they'll assist us a little bit there. Um, hydrant pairs, uh, due to some of the other work we're doing, we're, we're slowing down a little on that, but we, uh, we have some projects upcoming here. We had, uh, 2522 Orion, which is a hydrant that's ongoing. We have a valve, we're getting ready to replace, so we can finish that hydrant. Just a valve, we're done with it. 1839 23rd Street, we'll end up having a new hydrant. Uh, 2707 Saw Trail, this was an accident, a truck ran over the top of a hydrant, never reported. Uh, but we have a hydrant broken there, we're replacing that one completely. And also, we have, we had individuals that we have doing our valve inserts. Uh, this is a specialty job, so as we find these locations that will assist us, uh, we will put them in as needed. Uh, tree removal, to another issue in Saw Village, and multiple communities throughout the whole United States, the ash tree. Uh, residents complaints, we are taking those first. Anybody who has a branch that fell off an ash tree, or any tree for that matter, uh, we will deal with the, the tree as we go to it. We'll cut branches that are hazardous at the point, at this time. And as our LEAP program and the fall season starts, uh, we will have a little bit of help this year, hopefully, and we'll start just cutting the trees down. So you'll see the center block area, we'll just take all the ash trees down there in those areas. Uh, we do have quite a few of them left, at least another 250, 300 trees left, so there's quite a few. And there's residents' trees that they have too, so they should pay attention to those trees and take care of them before they become more hazardous. Branch pickup, our fall branch pickup is completed. Um, all special pickups will be announced, if any, most of the time. any, most of the time it's due to storm conditions, ice conditions, they'll be announced on the marquee. Any piles that are put onto a leaf pile during the leaf pickup will be put back into the yard, and the residents are responsible to remove them. If they're not, they may receive a ticket. So, please clean that up. Public Works also is still working on all their vehicles and their pod vehicles, and continue to work with the police department and ESDA on maintenance on their vehicles. LEAP program this year, we are, we have started, all these, all leaf debris was to be swept down for the first pickup starting on November 9th. So far, we've been running through it pretty quickly. The leaf drop is pretty good this year, the good winds we've had prior to that seem to push them away from Sawtow Village a little bit, so it seems like we're going to have a little bit of a light pickup at the beginning. But all debris has to be, all leaf debris has to be weighed down to the curb by November 22nd to be picked up, and once we've been by, we will not be back, so you're required to remove the leaves if you pull them out there afterwards, otherwise you may receive a ticket. This also does clog up our sewers, and it does not make your neighbor happy when we plow them into their yard. And after that street sweeping, November sweep for the sweep will be after LEAP program, and it'll be probably sometime in the middle of December by the time we're done. And last little note, this is the time of the year that most residents may experience a sewer problem. November, December, it seems to be the time of year that residents tend to, during the holiday, they use their sinks as garbage disposals, and sometimes they back up their sewers due to that. So, pay attention to what you put in your sinks, pay attention to what you put in your sewers, and hopefully you won't have any sewer conditions this season. In the Village, just for a last note, the Village does support the linesaber program. The information and phone number is at the Village Hall, you can call and get that. It's an insurance policy for your sewer, for rotting, repairs, et cetera. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move to the National Service Director.
I have a question for, a couple of questions for Kevin. Kevin, is there a way you can get me how many, I haven't answered today, how many hydrants we have on hand, and also, when do we have to start ordering for new hydrants?
Yes, I can.
And also, the turn lanes that are going on Saw Trail that's headed east off of Saw Trail on to northbound 394, do you have any information, are they going to make that a double turn lane like they did the other one coming south and going east? Do you have that type of information, if you don't have that?
Not this time, I don't, but I know they extended the turn lane, but it looks like it's going to be the same width, but it's extended further back, so you'll have more in the turning lane and not so many people in need to drive the straight line. It's just two blocks in the straight line, it's just weird.
Okay, because that lane in the morning time backs all the way up to DP with the trucks, I thought maybe they would extend that and make that a double lane, but, okay, thank you. And then I also, after the meeting, I think I want to get a copy of some of those things you said, so I can kind of bring those up to the meeting. Thank you.
Move to National Service Director, Mr. Zizinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't realize we're not having a meeting until December, so the Village Hall will be closed Thanksgiving Day and the Friday afternoon, which I believe is the 26th and 27th. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, hope you enjoy your holiday. Saw Trail Boost Folds has closed, the owner has relocated, I guess on his regular job he got transferred to Hawaii, lucky him. Update on NICOR for November 5th, we had, we had 220 tickets on the court docket, 209 were no-shows, 10 were guilty, and two were found not guilty. That's the way it is with court, nobody shows up. So, I finished the vacant list with Cindy's help, like 99% merged. Within the next two, one to two weeks, Sue and myself are going to be going out and platter in the vacant houses. We've got like fluorescent green vacant stickers that are going to be going on all the vacant homes. We're going to be keeping a close watch on those homes, and we're asking the residents if they see anybody going in and out of these homes, and please call the police department. And also, if we run upon the houses that are stickered with people living in them, we're going to ask the police department for assistance due to squatters. The police chief has also ordered do-not-enter stickers, which we have, and they're like bright orange, and when we find that the houses are being occupied when they shouldn't be, he's going to place those stickers on the homes, and they're going to be arrested. I believe that concludes my report.
I do, I do have a question. I just have one question. The old, excellent, is there, I see a lot of traffic going in and out, are they applying for anything?
No, they have not. I haven't heard nothing about that.
Thank you.
You were talking about the no-shows, and you said it was like 209. What happens to those?
What will happen is, they all get found default for failure to appear in court, and their fine is double. Once they don't pay it, they'll have to the following month to attempt to pay it. If they don't pay it, it gets rolled into collections, and if they don't pay the collection agency, then it gets sent to the state of Illinois comptroller, which they are varishing people's wages. So, I was hoping that that would make the people come into court, but it has not yet. So, we have a big volume of no-shows.
Do we have any control, is that an district law judge?
Our adjudicator's doing what he's supposed to be doing, it has nothing to get these people into court. Apparently, the people just don't care.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We should probably think about, we probably already have, so let's get something in Sawtow, remind the people what would happen if you did not appear in court. I know you're a manager, you have to record something, but maybe the next Sawtow beginning of the year.
Okay.
That'll be fine. All right, and so there is during your report, I'd like to read this, says Mayor Hanks, oh, the entire, however, there is one employee who has demonstrated outstanding teamwork, and that employee is Sherry Zizinski. The attached letter was being held for Ed's signature, Ed Nelson's signature, but his declining health will not allow that. However, it was discussed and agreed upon in previous meetings to do this. Therefore, please convey our heartfelt thanks to Sherry on behalf of the board. If you have any questions, call me, this came from Commissioner Mayor Ross. So, what we did was we took a letter that they sent, and I'll read this also, and we put it in the platform. It was dated September 28, 2015, says to Sherry, sorry, Sherry Zizinski to Mayor David Hanks, memorandum of appreciation. The Sawtow Fire and Police Commissioners Board would like to take this opportunity to thank Sherry Zizinski for all the assistance she has provided this board. Most recently, when asked if she could assist with the typing of various memos and letters, Sherry agreed, eagerly agreed on. On several occasions, there were last-minute changes, but that did not deter Sherry. She found a way to resolve the issue, which satisfied the needs of everyone. She was resourceful, dependable, and dedicated. The Fire and Police Commissioners is pleased with the service that Sherry has provided us. It is a pleasure to work with a professional who doesn't mind putting forth that extra effort. Please pass along our appreciation and heartfelt thanks to Sherry for her job well done. Sincerely, Chairman Commissioner Ed Milken, who is unable to sign for the passing away, Secretary Commissioner Leno Ross, and Commissioner Judy Katz, who hopefully will sign the letter. Come on, come up here. Come on, come up here. Thank you. All right, if anyone knows Sherry is outstanding, she's one of those that you give her a job and she tackles it, so we appreciate everything you do also. Move to Finance Director, Director Brode.
Thank me and the board, a couple items. The first and foremost thing is, we did conduct a financial review along with the village administrator. Last Tuesday, the department reviewed for fire department, ESDA, water, sewer, street, public grounds, and most of the department's expenditure is well under the budgeted expenditure line items. With, having said that, there was only one exception, the exception was the street department, which has spent a little bit over because of the I-DOT conflict. Other than that, everything is under control. The second thing is, the police pension fund has turned in their audit for 2014, 15 already, and we have, I mean, the treasurer of the police pension fund has provided the audit to our auditors, and hopefully, within another couple days, the final audit will begin and will be reported to state of Illinois, as is Scott County and Will County, that ends my report.
Thank you.
Question.
Justice.
Mr. Martin, the bond rating, have we started procedures on that, or are we just waiting?
Not yet. Once the audit is completed and filed, then we can take a map with, with the financial consultants, and then we will proceed with it.
Okay, so you're saying that the police and fire pension, they completed their for year 2014, correct?
Yes, 2014, 15.
Right.
That means 2015.
Okay, well, we have a problem with that coming the next one, or this would be satisfactory for us to at least apply.
This will be satisfactory, because all the three audits are combined and consolidated together. Moving forward, it would be a lot easier to get our rating back once again, back up once again.
Okay, and I don't know, Mayor, is this collective report something that you're going to read tonight, or is this something that was done a while back?
No, it's on the radio, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Move to.
Question.
Justice.
Ms. Martin, do, off the top of your head, how do we stand as far as account balances for the police and fire pension funds? Are they liquidated? What's the status of, off the top of your head? I'm not talking about figures. I'm saying is there a deficit in those funds?
Right now, I don't know. I'll get back with you with full information tomorrow, I can send you.
I'm sorry?
I can send you an email tomorrow morning.
Good luck.
With full information.
That's quite a lot. I don't have an actual email, so it's hard to say.
I can put it to your man phone.
I'll stop that, you know. Thank you.
All right. Move to Sawtow Village Homeland Security Agency Assistant Director, Amin Dano.
Mr. Mayor, important for us, these.
Oh, move your mics on. Mayor, you might just speak over the loud.
I think I can speak plenty of.
Kevin's got one for you.
Over the past two weeks, ESDA responded 21 calls. The emergency ESDA department responded six fire alarms, three vehicle accidents, one structured fire, one assist other agency, five scoop droves, and five CO investigations. So, ends my report.
Thank you, sir. Move to Human Relations Commission, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are still looking for members to join the organization, taking in ten more.
Can you hit that mic, or that mic?
Okay.
Is that mic, hit that mic a couple times here.
Yeah, yeah, hello. And I'd like to address the issue about the senior, none of them on that board. And we do start it, and the way it got started, I think Rob made a statement that Frank and Steve would be at all the same, they took that all the way back to slavery. Why would they do something like that? Because I don't know. And as far as you're saying, that nobody ever said they wanted to be all that black in there. I can point the person out to you that made that statement.
I demand that statement.
Thank you.
Which one? Have you seen it? Which one?
Do I have a right to speak?
No, no, sit down.
This is what he.
Sit down.
This is what he said to me.
You know, okay, let's stick to your commission's report.
Thank you.
Audience, please.
Okay.
Stick to your commission's report, and if you have anything to say, we can say it in the meeting when we have the meeting, because I was not here earlier. I guess the things were said, I came in during Steve or his report, which kind of made me think something was said. So, please, just stick to your commission's report. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you. So, is Housing Commission, Commissioner, welcome.
The Housing Commission will be here to go all first, and I also meant to bring up the police chief that will come to do the through, that is, that's the amount of homes that we turned down, that he can use for training. Anyways, he'll be able to use them for training as an officer and local community. Thank you. That's my report.
All right, very much. Senior Committee Chair, Representative Rose Lashen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The senior committee held a special meeting last Tuesday to approve the revised senior committee center policy. Many thanks to new committee member Steve Schimpfes for incorporating the various documents, to Mayor David Hanks, village administrator J.W. Fairman, and village clerk Debbie Williams for their assistance. More village seniors are attending the Friday Open Senior Activity Program. The next activity days will be Friday, November 20th, December 4th, and 18th, and then every Friday beginning in January of 2016. Thank you, committee members Frank Williams and Steve Schimpfes, who are taking their time to coordinate this committee's Sawtow Village Open Senior Activity. We have a variety of games available, and seniors refer their own end of if desire. However, the rugby club game was, has created quite a challenge for the seniors, and there's plenty of room for more challengers. Beverly Starens continued the Silver Sneaker Fitness Class, that's 10 and 11:15 AM every Tuesday, and welcome more participants. The ceramic group is open to all seniors, they meet from 8:00 AM until 12:30 on Wednesday. Our paperback book program continues to thrive. Thank you, Nancy Baker, for your continuous donation. The next movie co-sponsored with McConaughey Library will be Sam Cross Two with Tim Allen at the library on Monday, December 14th, 12:30. Light refreshments will be served. The next Blue Township Senior Community Lunch is on Thursday, December 17th, 2015, at Glen Woody Golf Club. Ticket deadline is on December 10th, unless sold out. The theme, It's Christmas, harmonized to the Christmas classics with the convertibles. Reminder, open enrollment, re-enrollment period for Medicare Park D ends December 7th. Counseling is available Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 3:00 AM on a first-count, first-served basis. For appointment and/or additional information, you can call the township at 708-754-9400, extension 244. Want to make a comment not to burst trustee Burgess's bubble. Last Tuesday, he commented that he and Mayor Hanks a few years ago resolved some senior issues and created peace. Not true. He did most of the talking and created more problems with the senior committee resolved without his assistance. The senior committee's next meeting will be on Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, that ends my report.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor.
Question, I have a question. That's okay, I'm not going to even answer that other one that you said, I didn't have anything to do with it because you were there, I'm through with that. I'd just like to know the committee policy that you came up with, did you give a copy to this board so we can at least... a copy to this board so we can at least be, uh, review it before you guys went and initiated that policy? Cause all policies by all committees should be reviewed by this board. So, pardon me?
It never has been.
I didn't say what had.
I've never seen, even the Parkinson's patient, we follow a lot of guidelines that they set up before. And all these policies were in existence, they are not anything new. That's why you heard me say that Jake Schimpfes has been, uh, foraging a lot of those, he's been reviewing a lot of the documents and incorporating them into a term one.
Uh, Rose, that was back then?
Later, I don't like the fact.
I'm not, I'm asking, oh, because I'm asking you a question. I'm asking you that you should, and you have your lawyer, the lawyers that we pay are here. You're at a board meeting. I'm just instructing you that if you make a policy that your committee goes by, it should be reviewed by this board before you enact that. Your, your, your committee does not have the power to enact policy that you made without reviewing it and under the guidelines of Saw Village. That's all I'm asking you. Did you involve the board, the left-wing secret policy that you have that you're gonna be moving forward with? I, I understand what you're saying, but the senior committee is not an island by itself. So all I'm asking, did you review, did you give a copy to this board so they can review your policy before you go forth with it? That's all I ask. I'm not going back and forth, I'm just merely letting you know what should be done by any committee, not just seniors, any committee. Any committee that has a policy that they change, it should. You just stated that you have a new policy. You just stated that, that you have a new policy. If you revise, ma'am. I'm not gonna go back and forth. I'm, I'm, I'm just letting you know, the lawyers are here, this board is here, I'm just telling you, just like you didn't remember what I said a couple, three years ago, but that's okay. I'm just merely enlightening you, ma'am, that, that, that should be done if we revise, if you change one word, it should be at least reviewed by this board. I don't need, I don't need the clap, I'm just trying to enlighten you, ma'am, that's
All right.
Trustee.
Uh, and mine kind of borders on, on trustee Burgess. Uh, when this document was, was provided to you, Mr. Mayor, um, I would have thought that you would advise whomever gave it to you that that committee does not have the right legally to develop a policy. They can draft a policy, they can submit it to this board for adoption and approval, they do not have the legal right to adopt a policy. And when they gave that to you as a stated policy, I would have hoped you would advise them of that, so, so that you know. And the attorney is sitting here, so maybe you want to chime in, uh, but they are not legislators. That is not their job. They can make recommendations all they want, but they still coming for this board to file approval. And I think the failure of your not doing that when they gave it to you has led to some of the discussion we have tonight, it seems to be a senior committee. Uh, so that tells me that there are issues that need to be addressed, and I understand that you have not addressed them. But to me, it's only gonna get worse. You cannot sit back and hope it gets better. If you're bleeding, you stop bleeding. You don't sit and hope you get a transfusion. So I think that someone, if you don't wanna do it, if you wanna delegate someone to get involved and resolve this senior committee thing so we don't have to deal with this every single week. It's, it's, it's not a waste of time because it affects everybody that goes into it. So I don't think it's a waste of time, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed and resolved and move on to different things. It's just, it's just poor timing, that's all I ask.
Thank you for your opinion. All right, we move to consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments? If anything, like trustees have anything for the, uh, consent agenda.
Uh, item E, Mayor, we asked you at the last meeting, uh, item E, um, did anyone get in touch and get an okay from, uh, Fort Heights? Because we said that if they don't okay, it doesn't make sense to do it, and that's why, I haven't heard anything on item E of the consent agenda, that Fort Heights hasn't been, um, um, notified. If not, can I ask that item E be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately? If there is not a, um, consent, not a consensus, but a, a actual, you know, someone talked to someone at Fort Heights and they said they was, they was okay with this. That was, that was the only thing, because if they're not, and we saw, we talked about this last week, it doesn't make sense to do this.
Well, fir-, first of all, it does make sense to do it. Second of all, someone asked about to, uh, Fort Heights. Uh, Mr. Rauw and, uh, J.W. Fairman talked to the mayor of Fort Heights. Also, I reached out to, uh, David Chandler and Judge McCormick, they were gonna reach out to Fort Heights. And I also reached out to Saw Village's managers and talked to, uh, Pezo, uh, to make sure they're on board. Fort Heights has already passed this one.
Okay, so they are, they're on board there?
They're on board.
Okay.
Fort Heights, as we said, received all correspondence, uh, always going all the way back from the beginning, all the way through this whole entire process through emails. So they, they, they do know about what's happening. And, um, like I said, Fort Heights already passed the first one. So what they're doing is giving all the information. This one here is the second one, which is an amendment.
Right.
So, so Fort Heights has already passed the first.
Okay, but you, right, they did, that's how you created the first enterprise I'm talking about now, with this new one incorporating these other villages. And we talked about this last, as of last week, Fort Heights was, you just talked to them, but they hadn't given you the okay. And I'm just wondering, because I didn't hear anything.
This has to be passed by every single community?
Right.
Not, not just Saw Village and Fort Heights. And here's what this, what's happened is, uh, putting together the very first one was all the communities going together under One for One Enterprise. Uh, Saw Village and Fort Heights are enterprise zones, so like 2022, 2023, something like that.
2021.
Right. So we're sending this through as an amendment, uh, to add these other towns into our enterprise zone. Uh, so under the first one, everyone agreed to, every community signed off on it, every community passed it. Uh, so, you know, again, working through Saw Village's managers, working through the, um, David Chandler and Judge McCormick, and of course, working through J.W. and Mr. Rob, making sure Fort, uh, Fort Heights has all the understandings, uh, and see if they have any open questions. Um, so then again, it's up to Fort Heights to print it, send it to the boards, like representing it and passing it. Uh, all the other communities are going back to their boards and getting the amendments passed and getting signatures on there. This, this is just Saw Village, we have the.
Well, I just, my asking, Mayor, is you told us last week that someone, and you, you did mention Judge McCormick and J.W. Fairman, and I just wanted to know from them, because as of yesterday, I was told that no one has approached them, but that initial time when you did, um, last week, that no one has approached them, uh, about them, and that's told the people that were involved, that you were, you know, probably, um, kinda busy, but that you would get this involved. I didn't know this was on the agenda, cause I didn't get my agenda until Sunday evening. So I didn't know this was on here, else I would have asked you then, but I didn't know, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not passing a legislation or we're not passing a, an amendment, and the principal city that's on here, which is Fort Heights, is not in agreeance with it, because as I, like I said, as I talked to someone the other, the other day, uh, Fort Heights, um, is still out, but maybe if they happen between, um, yesterday and today, cause Monday is when I talked to it, so I was asking.
There's other, other mayors that have to reach out. I talked to, um, the other night when she was here, um, Mayor Olympia Fields, Benny Miles.
Benny Miles, yes.
I talked to her, she's part of this agreement also, through Olympia Fields. Uh, she was going to reach out and talk to the mayor of Fort Heights. I know that mayors are gonna reach out to the other.
Right, that's right, that's right, but I'm just wondering the update, that's all I'm asking.
As, as for Saw Village, we have reached out to them.
But he hasn't said anything yet.
I, I think, you guys have another meeting scheduled?
Oh, you have another meeting? But that's why I was asking, can we do this? In other words, what I'm trying to say is, we were told last week that if Fort Heights wasn't involved in this, everything else is, is not on board, because they were the original, between them and us, they were the original ones that did this. And if they don't agree with this, then we have to start another one without them. And that's what I was asking, and now, how we can do that?
There won't be starting another.
Right, we can't do that because we haven't agreed with them.
Everything is already listed.
So I just wanted to find out, did we actually get an okay from, um, the mayor of Fort Heights that he is in agreeance with this particular amendment? And this is, that's why I asked it, anyone talking, I was asking to have this, to have this on table until, but I mean, we've had special meetings before, but I would hate to pass something and they're not agreeing, then we gotta come back and redo things, that's all.
Not gonna be able to do anything.
Okay, well.
But that's, it passes, that goes on, you could community pass it.
I mean, but if they don't, then what?
Everything, then, it's not gonna happen.
If they don't, that's what I'm saying, if they don't.
You keep on pointing out Fort Heights, but Olympia Fields decides they don't want.
But you said they were on board. You said everybody was on board, and you got an okay from them, and that's why I'm asking if Fort Heights doesn't.
Again, this is a amendment to what every community has already asked back in 2014. So every community has already signed off on this, every community has voted, uh, to approve. This is just an amendment to, uh, what was presented back in 2014.
Okay, well, I'd just like to make a motion to, to take this off until we get a confirmation from Fort Heights that they're gonna be involved in this, cause if they're not, then this doesn't mean anything, as you just got to say, it doesn't, we have, you know, it doesn't mean anything if they don't. I know people said they were going to, but we're going to and actually do it two different things, so I would like to have E taken off the consent agenda and table until we get a firm confirmation from the mayor of Fort Heights.
This is something that needs to be done before the end of November, this is their last meeting, that's why it's before us.
We've had special meetings before for less than that.
My second motion is emotional, of course, my second motion.
I have a big time for comments, question?
Question, time?
Um, I don't think that this is a good idea to be put. I know we discussed this in late, last week, we discussed it in line currently, and our advisors, the people that are working with us, I'm, uh, said that they have reached out multiple times to Fort Heights, our town, other towns, and I don't know how their municipality is brought, so they're acting bad to us. I don't think that it's something that me, or Olympia Field, or Beecher, or Creek, or anybody else should delay their progress. I think that this is something that we need to move forward with and say yes as a village. If Fort Heights elects to not participate, or they elect to not be a part of this, then that, that will be the responsibility of Fort Heights, and that would be the responsibility of our advisors, to come back to us as an agreement, has to be addressed. If this was something that they presented us, actually, and stressed the urgency, and that just talked about, I don't think that we can afford to hold this off, because who knows, if you don't have another meeting, a board meeting is going out for a month. If Fort Heights keeps dragging their feet, I don't wanna be responsible or whatever.
But trustee, if we, we talked about this last week, and if Fort Heights is not on board, this is just paper. And this is what I'm saying, I need to see if they're, they're gonna be on board. We had a week to, to find out. I don't know what happened in that week, but we had a week to have somebody to confirm that Fort Heights was involved. I asked yesterday some people that were involved in these same municipalities, and they said the same thing, Fort Heights has not confirmed it yet. And that's why I was asking tonight, did that happen between yesterday and today? Because as was stated last week, if Fort Heights does not agree to this amendment, it's not gonna happen.
Well, as of tonight, Saw Village hasn't agreed to this amendment, so your, your statement is, uh, if it has not been before the Fort Heights on board, they have not either. So just as tonight, since the board hasn't voted on it yet, Saw Village hasn't agreed to this yet either.
But that's why I'm asking, can anybody in Saw Village confirm that they will be part of this? Or as, as, we're going 20, 15 minutes. I'm just asking, can anyone, cause this is what we said we were gonna do last Tuesday, ask someone to talk to the mayor of Fort Heights to make sure that he's on board with this, so we can move forward? It, it was all consent, consent agenda, um, only if that happened. I'm asking now, had that, did that happen? If it didn't happen, then why are we doing it until that particular, someone can confirm that the mayor of Fort Heights said, okay, I'm on board with this amendment? That's all, that's it. Come on, move.
This is, this is something that needs to be passed by the end of the month, so, I mean, even if Fort Heights has not passed this, the, uh, like you said, it won't happen. But what we need to do is, all the communities need, need to get this passed before the end of the month. So this is before other communities, you got Olympia Fields, you got Beecher, um, Saw Chicago Heights, Chicago Heights, you know, Cook County, uh, State, um, State of Illinois, there's other agencies, other municipalities that are passing this, uh, to go ahead and sign for this. The two key individuals in this are Saw Village and Fort Heights, because it is our enterprise zone, and we're inviting other communities and agencies, I can spell them agencies, um, Cook County, State of Illinois, to join into our enterprise zone. So, um, it's very important that, uh, this gets passed tonight. Any other question or comments?
I have a question about the, the motion. The motion was to approve from the consent agenda and place it in business, or the motion was to move from the agenda and to not replace that happen until Fort Heights has?
It was moved to table, yes. I made the motion to table this, take it off. No, to take it off of the consent agenda and table it, yes, until such time we get a confirmation. I'm sure we can get somebody to drive over to the other side and ask a question.
I, I mean, you believe in words of water, but you can't even drink them.
No, but you can ask.
Say, if, well, I'm gonna say that he's had several meetings, and how are you handling being settled? You said you spoke, you spoke to other municipalities, and they attempted, and Fort Heights, for some reason, has not felt the need to, to respond, which is their own thing. But I think that, you know, that shouldn't hold us up from responding. I think it's something that's important, I think we're on a branch with it, but I kind of should get concerned with Fort Heights. So it's just my personal opinion that if we're voting to table it, then that's, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of the motion. It's not going, cause obviously, we have to do a lot of people who do business, so we're trying to accept the agenda, but you're asking for it to be completely removed, and I just don't, I'm not sure that that's the best idea, but the motion of the, our, our support, so I'll raise my vote.
Well, we can't control Fort Heights no more, just like we can't control Chicago Heights, Saw Chicago Heights, Beecher, all the communities are involved, just like they cannot control Saw Village, so, um.
Please don't pick up your hand while we're just, uh, talking.
So ready for the last one? Let's go for the last one. Any other questions or comments?
All right. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Takes?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Williams?
No.
All right, any other questions or comments, or anything for the consent agenda? I have E to move to new business. Mr. trustee has asked for that to be. Want to say?
No, that would get, I'll give you the promotion.
Or did you just ask to have it moved to new business?
Or.
Or trustee has asked for this.
The consent agenda can't stay as it is.
I'm asking, do you want it moved to new business?
You, you asking me to have it moved to new business?
You asking me, do you want it moved to new business?
No, I wanted it tabled, I'm not comparing it on new business, no, I, 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 I'm not gonna vote against the measure, I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing. It's not about me saying that I'm against what they're trying to do, no, I'm for that. I just wanna make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. You have to come back later on and have a special meeting and say, okay, wait a minute, Davey said no, and we gotta do this, this, and this. I'm trying to find out within the next two days, that we can have somebody, and I thought we was gonna have this done last week, have somebody go there and get a cons, at least a consensus or something, and somebody to say, yes, we're on board with this, Fort Heights, we're gonna do this.
All right, so I asked for a motion to approve consent agenda as is. Got a motion, is there a second? Go ahead, sir, please, go over.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yeah.
Takes?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams? Arches?
No.
All right, number seven, new business?
Mayor, the consent agenda is not a vote. You cannot vote. If you, if you're gonna vote on the consent agenda, it means you have total consent. If someone votes against.
We passed that, we're already not.
No, no, we've not passed that, the lawyer's sitting right next to you, you cannot vote. Consent means you have total consent. If you don't have total consent, it's no longer a consent agenda.
Since this point, your board has been, uh, your trustee has voted no on.
On consent agenda?
Consent agendas, yes.
You could vote, uh, Mr. McGrath, you could vote no on a consent agenda.
That is.
God, I know what that is, but it, but it is everybody's consenting to that, correct?
If somebody moves, have it either removed?
Yes.
That's already separate, you can do it that way. But if it's a consent agenda, it's viable, all those agencies.
So you don't have to have the total.
No.
To a consent agenda, thank you.
Everyone who voted no for everything on that consent agenda. All right, number seven, new business? I have made motion to approve accounts payable in the first week for October 28th, 2015, through November 10th, 2015, as a motion to approve.
No.
There's a second. Any questions or comments? Terry, number, village clerk, call.
Question, you talking about Fort Heights?
Says I told you. Who has a question?
You talking about, um.
County family.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, uh, Mr. McGrath, and my first question, you gave us two sets of accounts payable.
The first set is incorrect, that should have been, uh, in ways for $275. That was erroneously eliminated, so I decided to include the $275, so which makes the total accounts payable to 231-894-92.
Okay, now, you have a chance, I'm just wondering, because we talked about this before, about handwritten.
Yes.
Put into the, um.
Yes, I have, I have been in dialogue with the civic systems, they have not gotten back to me yet, they're working on it, they're, they're gonna let me know by tomorrow.
So from now on, I mean, it's, because it seems to be the same line item.
Correct.
So until they get that straightened out, that same line item will be written in, because this is a payment for the debt service.
Correct.
From the amalgamated bank, which is our tip.
That's right.
Okay, and it seems to be the same time, the same thing, because it seems to be the same amount that was last time.
Correct.
Okay, so it, but there's no, we, okay. The next question, and this is on second page of elected officials.
Okay.
Um, is, I'm in the water department, I'm in the sewer department, for a payment for a, I guess, a post-it in the paper.
Correct.
This particular paper is not, is not, why did we choose this instead of the one we used to choose, which was South, um, South Town? Why, why do we, because this paper here is, it's, I mean, it's not, South Town is a greatly syndicated paper. Who made the decision to go this way?
It was, it was because of cost. To go through Southland Voice, it was $93 to go through, um, the times. Almost a thousand.
The South, the South, um, Town was not either home, it, um, what was the second part, they went through the tribune, and since they got to the tribune, the cost is fixed.
Almost about $900.
When do, when do the people of the village get a Southland Voice delivered to their home?
Not everybody is.
No, I, I'm not saying the trip, I'm just saying that when do they get home delivery? I see it in the, in the, uh, businesses and some of the, um, other places, but, and South, South Town has deliveries to the home, and this is something that you would think, that you would, people to find out about, especially the treasurer's report, um, ad for a worker for Public Works, to go just to a local paper that if you're not in, if you don't go to the businesses or come up to the village hall, you wouldn't know about this. And I'm just wondering, I understand you saving money, but we're also not publicizing this particular ad the way we should, um, that's all I'm asking, why, I mean, I see this, this is the first time I've heard it, I've known once, they, they admitted that we were changing it because of, um, you know, because of finances, which makes sense, but why this particular paper, which does not go to home delivery?
All right, any other questions or comments?
I'm still waiting on an answer.
It's a newspaper, we put it in a newspaper, we also put it online, we also put it in.
So if someone starts a newspaper, and it's much, much, much cheaper, and they wanna put it out here on paper.
This newspaper covers the South suburbs.
It doesn't have home delivery, mayor, and that's what the reason why we put it in the paper, so it can have home delivery. We, the reason why we stopped doing, um, our, our, our paper, is because we couldn't afford the home delivery, but it is home delivery. This paper, is it online? Is this paper online? Can you pick this paper up on? Then you need to put that out there somewhere and let people know that this is out there online, I didn't, I don't know that either.
If you read this, if you read the paper, there's a portion, and it says that you can register.
But you have to get that paper to get that.
Right, but it's any essence, if you put it in a tribune, or if you put it in South, you would have to register for that to be home delivered.
But that's a syndicate.
Why they offer that, why they offer that service? I don't get a paper delivered to my house, so I, if it was a tribute, I would get it in the paper.
But you get South, Southland Voice.
Because I can come, I can go get that.
Thank you.
But I can go.
You can go get it.
But I could also go by a tribune, I could also go by a sometime, so if you were looking for it, you could do it, but all, this, this little paper and the tribune are all available online too, which is why a lot of people don't do home delivery anymore, because there's no one. I think that to save $900, I think that that would probably.
I, I, I don't, I don't see it, trustee, because now, it seems to me, and it's just me, and I'm one person, that is, you're steering this particular ad to just a certain percentage of people, especially those that, you know, don't have home delivery. If you're gonna put a publication out there, you, then you should at least make it available to eighty percent of the people that you, that you're trying to talk to, this is not eighty percent of the people do not read Southland Voice, unless, you know, they don't get home delivery, they don't read it, so I don't know, you know, when you think about it, I'm just wondering what, and who made that decision, but I understand now, I see who made the decision to change it from South Town to Southland, thank you.
Kevin, how many applications did you receive for that field worker?
Seventy-seven.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Question, does anyone know what the distribution is?
We're not here to debate Southland, was she a question about the accounts payable?
That is the accounts payable, mayor.
I just asked the question.
What was your question? You're not gonna ask it, anyone else have any questions?
We understand it's not gonna be another meeting in the rest of this month, are you prepared to give the board, um, payables as far as anything else, other than, as we stated before, has had no problem with, other than payroll and dispersed, I'm, I'm sorry, liabilities?
Yes, and we're gonna provide all the information to the board.
So you're gonna ask for a consensus between now and end of the month to pay those?
Yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, we'll hear it.
Well, then, I'm asking how, and that's what I'm asking.
Tonight, we have before us a policy, right? So once that policy's passed, then we'll, we'll have everything in place. So. Any other questions or comments? Terry, number, village clerk, please call.
Myers.
Accounts payable. Takes.
No.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes. Arches.
No.
Jones.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve the TRF Environmental Inc. invoice related to the pre-dedul, um, demolition expense in the amount of $3,825 for 1830 to 15th Street in South Village, is your motion to approve?
No.
That motion is there second.
Second.
That motion is second, any questions or comments? Village clerk, please call.
Takes.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes. Arches.
Yes.
Myers.
All right, motion carries. I have C, motion to approve waiving the bid process, we're getting fire truck, is there a motion to approve?
No.
That motion, that motion is second, any questions or comments? Terry, number, village clerk, please call.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Arches.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion carries. I have D, motion to approve appointment of budget finance, uh, community, community relations committee co-chair, trustee admire your motion to approve.
No.
That motion is there second.
Second.
That motion is second, any questions or comments? Terry, number, village clerk, please call.
Williams.
Yes.
Arches.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Takes. Yes.
Motion carries. I have E, motion to approve budget finance, not policy, motion to approve.
No.
That motion is there second. A motion is second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee.
Yes, um, I did talk to, and I do have, I sent our copies to each, every trustee, put it in their box, come to find out that they disappeared out of some people's boxes, because I had two trustees that tell me they did not get a copy, and the trustee in charge told me that she didn't accept, could you pass this down, please? That the, that she didn't accept handwritten copies, even though we get our handwritten, um, uh, accounts payable, or anything else that we get, but I'm asking to, to look at this, I don't know if you're saying that it has to be passed right away, this is something that I tried to present at the time, I didn't, um, get a chance to put this and type it in, because I've been doing a lot of other things, I have a lot of personal things that I have to take care of, so this is not something that I had a chance to take care of, but I did put these copies in everyone's box Thursday at, um, 7:45, I was seen by two other people in the, um, mailroom, they didn't know what I was doing, but they saw me in the mailroom using the copy machine, Thursday night at 7:45, somehow or another, they disappeared between that time and Friday. So I just wanted to, uh, bring this in, it's something that, you know, that the, uh, the trustee Williams talked about, it's just, I just have a few problems with some of the things, giving one person all of the authority over the other trustees to, uh, okay, uh, emergency checks. I think if it's an emergency, and if it's a handwritten check, I don't care about any, any amount, it should be discussed and okay, at least talked about with the board, or at least the majority of the board, if you can't get everybody, that's why you have the board here, is to oversee the money. But to give that responsibility to one person of the board, and then to other administrators, uh, I have a problem with that, and that's why I'm asking, can we table this, to at least have a chance to talk about this, but then again, all I'm asking is to have this table, um, and that's why I, I, I passed this out, so everyone can take a look at it, um, they did have, I don't know, I just wanna ask quickly, mayor, each trustee, did they, or did they not get a copy of this, um, prior to right now, um, Ms. Washington, trustee Washington, did you get a copy?
No.
Trustee, um, Jones, did you get a copy?
Yes.
Trustee Takes?
Well, I'm one of the offers of this, so I had a copy.
Okay, trustee Myers.
There was not one in my mailbox.
It wasn't in your mailbox, okay, trustee Myers?
Yes, I did get a copy.
Okay, trustee Williams?
I got my copy when I came this day.
No, did you get a copy?
It was this week, but it wasn't my mailbox.
It was, so it was one in there, right, this week, okay.
Good.
Just wanted to know, because I had two people say they didn't get it, so I don't know what's going on, but.
Did the mayor receive one?
I gave it to the board, because she was the, she's the, um, chairman, so I wanted to go through her board before she get presented to the rest of the, um.
The management board.
Okay, well, I don't, would have a copy, I have a, mayor, because I put one in the mayor's, and I put one in JW's.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just, just to kind of, um, say, last Tuesday, when it was presented, when the policy was presented, um, at the board meeting, I did ask for comments and questions at that time, and then I did ask that, um, if all the trustees could take it home, review it, and submit any changes to me electronically by five o'clock on Thursday. The reason that I stated that time, that I'm gonna repeat right now, is that I said, at that point, that would allow me the opportunity to then try to meet with my committee to review any suggestions or changes that were provided. On Friday, at approximately seven, 7:21, I emailed the board, including the administrator and the village clerk, and, um, expressed that according to the policy, I had not received any emails or any notifications that there were any changes, so that the policy that was submitted, would be one of the policies we're gonna go with. At that time, I did receive, I did receive an email from trustee Arches that stated that he had made some suggestions, and that he placed them in my box. I was here on Thursday, and I was here on Friday morning, and I didn't see it in my box, I did tell him that. He stated that he had two witnesses that saw me in the mailroom, and that he had placed, placed it there at 7:45 PM. I replied back to him at that time, and I told him that I had asked for it electronically by Thursday at five, and that while he had the date right being Thursday, the medium which was set at the time, however, was not right, and that that did not allow me the opportunity to meet with my board to discuss, to discuss the changes. Also in that email, I asked him to resubmit it to me that night. I said, I'm sure you did not handwrite this, I'm sure you typed this up, but please, if you could, you could submit it to me electronically. I told him I would make my attempt to reach out to my board, so over the weekend, we could review the changes, we could see what he said, and possibly, I, I didn't know the schedules of the finance director, the village administrator, or Mr. Myers, but I was hopeful that the four of us could come together via email and discuss the changes that we presented. However, I never received a electronic copy, so I was not able to disseminate that to my committee. So unfortunately, trustee Myers says, he said he got his before, but I don't know if the finance director or the village administrator had received a copy of what trustee Arches had for tonight, so as members of the committee, they were not able to review it and make any changes. I did look at it, it wasn't my box when I came today, I did look at it, and I reviewed some of the changes that I, before.
You said it was in your box today?
When I pulled my stuff out of my box to come to this meeting.
But it wasn't there Thursday, it wasn't there Friday, I mean.
It was not there Friday, and I had not.
I, that's, that's the reason why I passed it out today, because I didn't repass it out at all, even trustee Washington asked, because she had a copy, I said, no, I was gonna do it tonight, because I didn't wanna, you know, confuse anybody, but now you said it, it all of a sudden, it appeared Friday, I mean, now.
Wasn't here Thursday, wasn't here Friday, and when I came in today, it was on the top of my stuff in my box today, so, I don't, I'm like, trustee Arches, I don't know how it got there, but I was here Thursday, I was here Friday, and it wasn't in there. But again, either way, Friday night, I did ask that she submitted electronically, so that I could have the opportunity to submit it to my committee, so we could review. I did look through it, I, I've seen some changes, I've seen a lot of it, it's very similar, wording is different, and then I, I mean, I've got some questions about this as well, but, um, regardless, this is the, this is the policy that's on the agenda tonight, the one that was submitted by the committee, that's the one that's been reviewed, that's the one that has, um, that we are presenting for vote tonight, and again, one of the reasons that I urge so much for this committee having, and having this policy ready for tonight, is because we don't have another meeting for the rest of November, and we have two meetings in December, I think we're going to two in a year, and the village clerk, and the village mayor, the village mayor have already stated they're not gonna sign the handchecks, and I know that Mr. Mohan Ra, the finance director, the same people said, try to get a consensus, but he can get as many consensuses as it does he wants, if the people who are responsible for signing checks are not gonna sign the checks, that's the problem, and the reason why they stated they're not gonna sign checks, is because we've asked to not have consensuses before, we've asked to not have handwritten checks, there's been so much up in the air, so there needs to be a policy that's put in place, so we don't tie the hands of the finance director, and that we can actually get people to bill the pay, because if you notice on accounts payable right now, there was a question on accounts payable, so, you know, if it's anything voted on, if it isn't passed, then payroll liabilities will get paid. So that's me, that, that's a major problem, if we don't pay our terms, our, you know, maybe a month, that, that, that sucks, not the bad, or, you know, most concerned, but But if our employees don't get paid, that's a problem for me and those are handchecks. So I I really urge the board to look at the policy and if there needs to be amendments, amendments in summer, okay, fine. But I'd like to really have a policy in place for we need tonight so that we can function as a village for the next year.
Trustee uh Mayor, trustee Williams, I just wanted to say, today we had a special meeting for something that took, matter of ten minutes or whatever. And now we're not gonna meet now until the first of December. But I think payroll was something that's very important and we should at least take another look at that. And to not and to do this and then you said wait till December, I I'm I'm still, I'm still not okay with that for a certain reason. It gives one individual of the board the authority to to okay a um handwritten check. And you know, I I just don't, I just have a problem with me not knowing or finding out after it's been written. You know, we've had meetings for less than, and if we had to have a meeting for less than, me myself, I'll tell you right now, I'll forgo whatever payment it is for that special meeting. If it has something to do with um paying emergency checks or handwritten checks. It's not about the money for me to get paid to come here for fifteen, twenty minutes and say, okay, let's talk about this, let's do, we have the money, or let's vote on this together. Because this is what the people of South Village elected me to do is to watch their money. But not to give that authority to one person that happens, the one person on the board has that authority along with the administrators to issue that check. I have no, I mean, it's just something I think that's more important than having a board meeting or not having a board meeting, this is your money. I've always stated that the payroll and the liabilities that go along with payroll, if we have the money, those pay irregardless. Have no problem with that, have no problem with that. If we have to borrow money to pay payroll, then so be it, I have no problem with that. But everything else, I just wanna make sure that we just don't get somebody up there and say, okay, we gotta pay this person right now because, you know, that's my friend or whatever the case may be. I just want this board to vote collectively and vote what the people voted their man to do to do.
And just as a point of convention, it's not the responsibility of one sole member for the different items. The the chairperson, which would be me, the chairperson is one of three people that are eligible to make that decision where it only needs to.
Right.
That was a suggestion that was given by the.
Right, that's what you had.
I didn't have to be put on there, I stated that last Tuesday, I said that last Tuesday, this was a suggestion that was brought up by the village administrator. And I asked at that, at that time, if anybody had any questions or concern about that. Nobody said anything, that's why I added it to the policy. I said that the policy I gave you guys right as we, two changes were gonna be made. That point that the village administrator had provided and because I had forgot to put payroll liabilities and that's why I did it to the policy now. I'm I'm not saying that that's what necessarily should happen. I think what the case was is that there's a hierarchy, mayor, village administrator, if one of them is unavailable and there's a situation, the the finance committee chair. That was what was suggested in case they needed it. I don't, I hope that that's not an option that's used very often, but if in case that that is an option that could be needed, I know that that's how similar other communities do that and similarly set up because the budget finance committee does, is more involved in the process. But again, that's how the policy is presented now. If revisions need to be changed, fine, but to table it, again, I I don't see how, we've been talking about this since October thirteenth, when the county cable came out with the fifteen handwritten checks. We've gone back and forth, consensus, and we had people say, I'm not signing checks, I'm not giving handwritten checks, I'm not getting a consensus, blah, blah, blah. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to move forward, that that's my statement. And and again, I I can understand, but just like in the policy that you provided, it states that there has to be information provided to the board via electronic email. Regardless, my policy says that, the policy you presented stated, no matter what happens, the board has to be notified and has to be voted on by county cable.
But you stated here in your, in your um policy, from one thousand to nine ninety-nine, the finance director shall be given the authority to immediately pay any payment request under ten thousand dollars with the written approval of two of the following. Mayor, village administrator, or finance chairperson. So you're right, it could be just the mayor and the village administrator stating that this, that we, that we need to do this and those two could do it and you're not even being included. You're absolutely right. But that's what I, that's what I don't want. That's what you have the trustees for, checks and balances, if that's the case.
If you look at their policy, it states that for anything that's ten thousand dollars or below, the same problem, same with the mom and I now, that the public works director, the chief of police, shall be able to use those personally in an emergency without going to anybody. They they have the response, they have the right to be able to make a determination of what's considered an emergency. And not that I don't think that either of those departments have the ability or the uh.
Got a first officer.
But this says that they can do that and they don't need the village administrator, anything ten thousand dollars or above, they would need it. But if they wanted to spend nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, they could approve it right in check.
But I have it also itemized and it says for emergency vehicles, catastrophic failures, municipal whales, catastrophic failures in the streets, catastrophic failures to the water system, catastrophic failures to the water system, and catastrophic failures to an uh an address in an event. Those, if it's a catastrophic, I mean, you have a hurricane here or you have a tornado here and it knocks down, knocks down something that's really, really needs to be taken care of, like our communications. Yes, that's catastrophic. That's 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 a no-brainer. I'm not talking about to pay something that we should have paid um a a vendor or anything like that. I mean, to pay a vendor because he's behind, okay, we understand that, we need to pay our vendor. We don't need an immediate check to pay our vendor.
But you think that gasoline is not something that you.
But they budget for gasoline.
Understandable, so, but also.
Trustee, this is something.
Okay.
A motion is second and fourth, any other questions or comments? Fair enough.
I have a question.
Trustee Tate?
This is our attorney sitting over there. Um could you give me, tell me what the statute is that says that some of us need provided electronically? She stated that she wanted a response sent to her electronically. And I'm trying to find out the statutory provision which says that communications has to be done electronically.
I don't think there's anything that says that in writing, so.
I said attorney, you you playing a man today.
You know, trustee.
My question was sitting in attorney, you gave me the floor, you gave me the floor and my question was sitting in attorney.
Trustee, I don't think it's in writing that has to be in writing either. The trustee says she wants it electronically, she says that's what she says she wants.
You too?
I'll let you know, Meyer. Village clerk, please call roll.
This was for the policy that was presented by the budget finance committee.
You're talking about payroll for employees and.
No, this is the committee that the, the policy that was committed.
I thought about the policy. That's so we can continue to keep payroll on everything, that's all, that's all in the policy, okay? All right.
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Takes?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. All right, motion to approve resolution urging Illinois state leaders to release general, non-general fund revenues, payables to local governments as a motion to approve. Motion's for a second.
When I came in tonight, the village administrator did give me an email that he got and I did pass it on, they copied and passed it on to the board, so.
I'll give it up to you, um for comments. If my day now is turned off. Any other questions or comments? Fair enough, the clerk, please call roll.
Burgess?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers? Takes?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. It was at number eight, this is Thomas from board, uh mayor board of trustees, trustee Williams.
Um when when the village clerk gave her part earlier today, she stated that um some people might not be in agreement with what she had to say. And um I was kind of one of those people. But you know, since the rest of the Williams family spoke out about it tonight, I might as well just complete the circle. Um I don't know, trustee Burgess has stated that the senior citizen committee policy should be presented to the, presented to the board. I don't know when the last time we saw any revisions for the parks and rights policy. I don't know if Mr. Trustee Jones has done any, I don't know if trustee Poskins did any. And if he presented anything that was about the actual physical building, my mind could be escaping me at this point. But I I know that it's been a while since anything's been presented about the actual pub, the buildings. Um I actually talked with uh Mr. Fairman about some suggestions I have for the, for both of the buildings. Because these two committees are so important because they oversee, they've been given the responsibility by this board, by practice. And I I don't know if it's by policy, but they've been given the responsibility to oversee along with their committees, the buildings. No other committee that I'm aware of has a building that they need to be responsible for to set policy for. And so they're unique committees, they're committees that um, one's a standing committee, one is no longer a standing committee. So I I'm curious to know what the, the legalities are of policy and how they change the policy and what needs to be presented. So I personally think that this is something that needs to be addressed for both committees at a committee meeting on the agenda to discuss what they can and cannot do because they are overseeing a building, a building that people rent out, a building that people, you know, attend functions in. So I I personally would just maybe like to see what happens there. And um this is a final comment about what happened and what the comments were being said today. I don't know who said what, I don't care who said what. I don't care if somebody said they just wanted black people and I don't care if they just said they wanted white people, I honestly don't care. What I care about is that anybody in this room who is older than me, which leaves everybody except for four people in this room, if anybody had, oh, five, I think, five, if anybody in this room has that mentality in two thousand and fifteen, you should be ashamed of yourself. Absolutely, if you're trying to subsume anybody for any reason, you should be ashamed of yourself. You're acting childish, you need to grow up. People don't like people, okay, get over it. You cannot, that's something that people have to learn. Whether, I'm so tired of this, of this village with rapes dividing everybody, politics dividing everybody, I'm I'm so, I'm so tired of it. You need to grow up, everybody in this room just needs to really just grow up. Policies are what set people into place. That's why I said before with the, the budget finance policy, you have a policy, once it's in writing, you know where to go from there. If the, if committees have to present their policies to the board, let's put that on the committee meeting agenda, let's make that a policy. That before parks and wrecks, before seniors changes, anything with their building, they have to make a policy and present that. But until we tell them that that's what they have to do, we can't expect that that's what they need to do. I've said before that what's been practiced and what we've done in the past, and I've been told that you can't follow practice. And that just because we did it before, we should do it now. So again, I'm asking that this item, the buildings for parks, for senior citizens committee, the community center, senior citizens center and the community center be on the next committee meeting agenda to talk about the building rental policies for both of them. If there's a new policy, it needs to be presented to the board and as a board, we need to determine if we should be overseeing those or if we're gonna leave it up to our committees. Because it can't be one way with one and one way with the other. It needs to be, that needs to be definite, because I'm for one, I'm tired of of name-calling and finger-pointing and you know, just enmey hide and mo, who gets to do what. It's ridiculous, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, and we need to set an example for the board, so that's what is happening.
Trustee Myers?
Okay, first of all, I know the fire employees, any type of uh policy we do at S.O.G., everything has to be approved, run through this board. I personally feel that the, the policy that the mayor had the other night, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a copy of it, I have never seen a copy of that. I'd like to see it, and I still feel that this board should look at it and give their opinion of it. That that is a uh part of the municipal buildings, that's part of the uh buildings that the village of South Village owns. And I think should be able to be used by the village of South Village people. And so if we need to set a policy in place, if we need to get a policy in place for everybody to live by, that's the reason I asked uh last Tuesday for the village manager to get involved. And I do believe that a couple of seniors did meet with the manager. And I know one of the uh seniors told me that uh he liked the policy that uh they came up with, setting, talking to the village manager. So I just feel that the seniors have something other that should be put in the policy, get it all grouped together as uh trustee Williams said, get it all grouped together. Let's get it out in the open, let's look at it and let's decide which one we're gonna go with. And I I I'm not in favor of this person said this in the policy, we uh go out and get happy, does it friend, sign it, okay, let's start out. No, I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor in that this board to look at it and decide which one it goes, that's all I have.
That was my way to respond to this stuff, but I'm not going to. Um first of all, committees, they have a board where you have a chair and they have, most of the time, I think it's usually six individuals on that board. Um when things are presented to that board, they vote on just like this board here. You didn't make, you didn't miss, made a statement, I just wanna make sure we clarify, police and fire department policies do not get through this board. They go through the police and fire department. I can't, I can't ever remember, she made any policies from the fire department. Yeah, but just like the SOPs in the police department, this board doesn't.
It's settled through the board for approval, not in the police and fire commission board, it's settled through the board for approval. You just had to say, Mayor, that the police and fire commission wasn't looked at at the time, you just said that.
No, I said the police department and fire department, they put it together, they're SOPs.
You put them together, you're right, a hundred percent.
Correct, and committees, just like parks and wrecks, senior committees, you have a chair. And they have individuals that are on those, those committees, they vote on those committees to approve. So um again, even when the parks and wrecks policies were first made, I was sitting on this floor with Mary Siri, was the parks and wrecks, old parks and wrecks. They passed their own policies and as a courtesy, came to the board and said, just so you know, during a committee meeting, here's the policies and stuff that we passed. Just so the board would know, and they, they, they changes going on back to when Mary Siri was on there. Um so again, we'll, we'll look at this stuff here, but um again, we have committees and I think what's happening is this board here wants to now, we just control, they want to control every committee. And I think you're opening yourself up because number one, our committees are ran by volunteers. So if you wanna run their committees, get ready to run their committees because they're probably all gonna walk off.
So. I said that, Mayor, I asked the board to see their policy.
And they can, they can present, they can present those policies and you put those policies in your guys' box and you work on them.
Well, regardless, I I think we know that everything we do in this town, we're open, we're all up, we're in the board, we're all over the town. Regardless of what we do, we're still on top of, so anybody who's. We know that.
You have a board, you have multiple boards and committees, same thing as commissions. Commissions have their, their policies, commissions uh passed up, they don't answer through this board, so. All right, trustee Tate?
My question's for the attorney. Do any of the, do the committees by state statute have the right to make policy? Or do they make recommendations for policies that come before the board?
Your question goes through the mayor.
Here we go.
So you have a.
Attorney works for the board there.
And you have to address the board chair when you're asking a question. And I turn over and ask the attorney to answer the question.
But you can't say it goes to the mayor, I mean.
It does, questions go to the chair.
That's for the individuals and the auditors, they have three minutes and all their questions come to you.
Questions go to the chair.
Okay, chair, answer the question, please.
Village attorney, please answer your question.
Commissions and committees, they don't set policy, they set rules and guidelines or whatever they're involved with. They can't set policy for the village, because they could set rules and guidelines just for, for instance, the senior center or uh community center. They can set the hours of operation, they can set these certain hours or for kickball. And then six o'clock, it's for basketball, but they can't set the policy.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, my, my question, thank you for helping me answer.
Then I have a question. So is it an improper use of the word policy? Because if you're saying that they can, they can determine what activities are taking place, does that mean that there are rental agreements, um rental times, rental? That's my question, that's why I'm asking.
That kind of uh, the type of information, a decision should be made by the village board.
That's why I'm asking that it's brought to a committee meeting because the past practices is not that. It's good that the committee, they've been able to determine that. And if that's what's going, even if it's fine, but if it's gonna be a change, then the board has to set along with those two committees. Because as trustee Hank said, these are both very dedicated committees, they're, they're, they help and they do the, they do the programs and everything. But he can't just off and say, now we have to do it this way, if this is in the practice. There needs to be a board decision made on what's gonna happen. That way, there's both, because like I said, and I could be wrong, I've, I've held a lot of meetings and ten years, but I don't remember anything since trustee Burgess presented to us about parks and wrecks. I don't remember that trust, that trustee Benson brought anything to the board about parks and wrecks, what he was gonna do. And if trustee Poskey of the committee changes the policy, and then I could be wrong, but I don't remember. And unless trustee Jones has not made any, I don't think that there's been anything with, from his tenure about the actual policy. So that's why I'm asking that, not that you stated that if it comes to the buildings, that this is one of the things he presented by the board, I'm asking that it's on the committee agendas so that we can work with those committees, not against them, but work with them to determine what is the best practice. So we don't have situations where people are feeling that they're being discriminated against for any reason. And that we don't lose our balance here from real community. The buildings, because it's, it's game to you.
And I just think we need to remember, we set these committees in place for like renting buildings and community center, example, the committee takes applications.